Having appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 Committee of a Hold to Order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie? Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio? Alderman McMinim?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Madam Chair, Aquorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would like to accept the motion for approval of the May 24th, 2022 Committee Minutes.
So moved.
That chair.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, would you please present the Treasurer's report?
I am happy to, Chair Purchase. Thank you. The corporate fund in the month of May had a beginning balance of $49,138,450. We took in total receipts of $17,353,580. We had total disbursements in the month of May of $9,701,124, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of May of $56,799,600. Of that corporate fund balance, Chair Purchase, your ARPA fund balance for the month of May was $14,143,477. I do want to note that I sent you all an email that we received this year's money, so you are aware that that is going to be a larger number next month. Thank you, Chair Purchase.
Yes, Madam Treasurer, thank you. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report?
Ma'am?
Nope.
Great. Are there any presentations?
No. No presentations.
Great. Alderman?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move ordinance 2022-255 to the front of the agenda for consideration.
Second.
Second to the motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Madam Chairman, I'm now making a motion to send this ordinance on to the counsel, to the debate agenda.
Let's read it first, please.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes. A resolution authorizing an advisory question of the public policy submission for the ballot for the general election to be held on November 8th, 2022 regarding dissolving the portion of all townships located within the city of Springfield.
Wrong ordinance.
Wrong one. Which one are you on?
Veterans.
256.
256.
256. 2022-256, a resolution supporting the designation of a cul-de-sac located at Oak Ridge Cemetery around the war memorials as the Heart of Honor Plaza.
Second to the motion to place it on debate.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Discussion.
The ayes have it.
Discussion.
Discussion? Oh, any discussion?
Alderman Redpath.
Alderman Redpath?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to introduce the Black Tigers Honor Guard. This is the group right here in the front row. The commander of the Honor Guard is Sergeant Kenny Box. Can you give him a stand up, please? Our NCOIC is Drill Sergeant John Hensley. He's out with a medical issue right now. And our XO for this, for this group is John Hensley Jr., and he's, he got held up at work. This is, this is a group that handles the vigil at the Vietnam Memorial out to Camp, Camp Butler. Not Camp Butler. I mean...
Oak Ridge.
Got me all mixed up now. So, and then also with them is Jim Mathis, who is the chairman of the Vietnam Vigil presentation that we have every year. We just had our 34th year of the Vietnam Vigil, and next year is the 35th anniversary, which I'm gonna ask Scott Doll, if he'll work on some stuff for that, to try to get some people to come out to that, that vigil, because it's very important. I'm sending this ordinance to, you guys can sit down. I'm sending this ordinance to the council for the debate agenda, but I got some issues that we need to work out. I know that there's some, a few conflicts, and so we're, I'm asking the council to, you know, embrace this, because it's a, it's a good idea. This is something the veterans groups are, are very passionate about. So, I'm going to ask this to be, to go to the city council for the debate agenda, but I'm going to schedule a meeting with the veterans groups and all the parties involved, and we'll see if we can't figure it out. So, with that, I appreciate the Black Tigers Honor Guard for showing up here. I know people from post 755 VFW is here. We have some people from American Legion and some other groups. I don't know if there's any Korean War ones. Is there? No?
Or Gold Star members.
Gold Star members? Thank you. And thank you for everything you guys do for, for the, for the vigils and for the memorials and for the city of Springfield. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. So, we have a motion to move ordinance.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman McMinim?
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. Comrade Mathis would like to speak to the ordinance.
Well, I don't know how much you want me to go into, but there's a bit of history to it. I'll start with PJ Stipe had a multimillion dollar project around it to include other, other wars since Vietnam, and, and very well done, very nice. I like PJ. I golf on Wednesday nights with him. He's a good man. But this project is massive, and when PJ does something, it's done well. He does a good job. I like PJ. Having said that, the name of that was gonna be called the, the Heart of War. And ages ago, I said PJ, that's a bad name. That's just a bad name. We're not, you know, heart stands for love or affection of war. Uh-uh. That's bad. It should be honoring the veterans, not war itself. So, he and I have been through this for a long time. So, that's how this got started. I said, PJ, if you don't believe me, ask some other veterans. Check it out. You know, you should be honoring the veterans. You shouldn't be honoring the war itself. To me, a war memorial, you'll see a jet, or a howitzer, or a tank. To me, that's something that has to do with war itself. So, that's the gist of the issue. Then what happened was, he hasn't got the money to do it. He's been working on it for years. He's got some really great graphics and whatnot on it. It's beautiful. Well, I said, well PJ, I said, why don't you just piecemeal it? Why don't you get, as part of it was the Gold Star Monument that he had, which I think is nicer than Woody Allen's memorial to the Gold Star families. But, I said, why don't you just piecemeal? Start with the Gold Star. Start with the Gold Star families. And, and you know, just piecemeal it, and then work, work around the rest of the project. Well, then I come to find out that he wants to bring it downtown to the Y is one of his proposals, the Gold Star Park. And I wish John Hensley was there. His, his mother, he lost a brother. And he mentioned to his mother, he says, no, we need to be with the boys. It's really what the mother said, Gold Star mother. So, the two issues right now, and the one we're talking about is, is just the name. The two issues essentially, we don't like the word war, and he said it's too late to change it now. He said it's too late to change it. And I said, well PJ, if it's too late to change it, why are you moving to Gold Star? Why don't you move to Gold Star Monument downtown? That's a bigger change. No reply. So, that's where we're at. We're in limbo with all this. We hope you can understand that, that, that the name's not good, and moving to Gold Star Monument downtown is not good. To give you an idea of what happened with the Vietnam Memorial years ago, when we were looking for a place to put it, they wanted to put it where the visitor's center is by, by the Stratton Building, because a church owned that. And that church says, well, you can have it, but we gotta prove what it's used for. And the state wanted us to put a memorial down there. Well, that was not where we wanted it, because we gotta worry about people that aren't too well off, sleeping and doing all their other stuff around town. You know, they're having hard times, and I got, you know, I was lucky. Well, I was actually a homeless vet years ago, but not like these people. This is not good. So, we didn't want it there, and they about had heart failure, I think. And then it turned out to make it into the visitor's center. So, this is kind of a similar issue. We don't want the Gold Star Memorial on the Y block because of those issues, right?
Correct.
Gold Star, that's a Gold Star remember right there. So, basically, those are the two main issues. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Comrade Jim Mathis, so the ordinance before us is, has to do with naming the cul-de-sac where the Korean War Memorial is, the Vietnam War and World War II.
All that area.
So, do you have a, do you have an alternative name that you would like it to be called other than?
Well, there's several, but not war, like Plaza of Honor?
I see.
Veterans, Veterans Honor?
Well, the resolution reads the Heart of Honor. That's what I was...
Well, I mean, we're not opposed to that either. I mean...
Well, we can't change your mind now. We got it in writing, so.
Plaza of Honor, or?
Heart of Honor.
Heart of Honor. Heart of Honor? We're all good with Heart of Honor. And I can get, I could fill this room up with people if you want me to. I don't have a problem doing that. We're missing two, and there were Gold Star family members too, but the one was having ice surgery, and the other one had to work.
Thank you, Alderman McMinim. Are you finished?
Comrade Mathis, are you finished?
If you don't have any more questions?
No, we do, but I'm asking as Alderman McMinim done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
No problem. Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you. After hearing what you said, I agree. I will not vote to, to move anything, the, the Gold Star. I have a family member that was killed in action in Vietnam, Michael J. Calendrino, from Springfield. And I know that his, his mother, my aunt, my great aunt, my great uncle, who, who are gone now, they would, they would not want him to be separated from the rest. I also agree that with the Korean Memorial, it was not considered a war, it was a conflict. It was never, you know, so it, it'd never been declared a war, so I can thank Mr. Glossy, my history teacher, for teaching me that. But, so I think this is a perfect name, but I, I agree with you that the Gold Star should not go down. And I think that, that, like, I, I love everything PJ does for the town, but, but you guys should have full say-so on this stuff, and, and, and I'll, I'll back you guys 100%. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see we have, thank you, sir. Thank you for your service too.
Thank you.
One thing I should mention is the reason the Vietnam Memorial turned out so well. We had Gold Star families, we had veterans, we had a bunch of stakeholders, and that's why it turned out so well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
I see we don't have any further discussion, but we do have a motion for debate.
In a second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we move to the front of the agenda, the appointment ordinances, which are Agenda Items Number 2022-245, 246, 247, 248, 257, and 258. So move.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you read those ordinances?
Will do. General City Business, 2022-245, an ordinance supporting appointing Samantha Raymond to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Are you, are you gonna do an omnibus vote on those?
That would be great.
Yeah, I'll make...
Well, do you want, Madam Chair?
Do we need to read all the ordinances?
If you're gonna do omnibus, I would read the whole.
Make a motion, we'd do omnibus.
Second.
Second.
So, please read all of them.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. 2022-246, an ordinance approving the appointment of Lisa Badger to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board. 2022-247, an ordinance approving the appointment of Tiffany Mathis to the Civil Service Commission. 2022-248, an ordinance approving the appointment of Amy Shrek Martin to the Civil Service Commission. 2022-257, an ordinance appointing Frank W. McNeil to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. 2022-258, an ordinance approving the appointment of Nicole Clements to the Housing Policy Advisory Council.
Motion for debate?
Thank you. Is this the moment where I ask you to speak, or allow them to speak first?
Well, actually, if any, the people who are in attendance, who are being appointed, want to speak, they should be allowed to.
Do we have any in the audience who would like to speak, and at least introduce yourselves, and just?
Ms. Allen has signed up to speak.
Come on up.
We'll start with, no, we'll start with you, Ms. Mathis. This is my first meeting as Chairwoman, so be patient with me.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I think that my record pretty much speaks for itself as far as my dedication to Springfield, being of service to this community, because I always feel that that's the currency that we owe for taking up space here. I also don't choose to place my time in places I can't be effective or lend my professional acumen, so you have my dedication to the city of Springfield as always, and I appreciate just being able to come up and speak today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa?
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to further serve my community. Ms. Mathis is a tough act to follow as usual, so I probably won't be quite as eloquent as her, and I can't sing as well as her either, so, but I'm very, very happy to be able to further contribute to the community, so thank you so much for having me.
No problem. Thank you. Ma'am, I'm sorry. I don't recognize you, but I saw you stand up in the yellow jacket. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Amy Martin, and I am an applicant for the Civil Service Commission. I have been a resident of Springfield for 18 years. I like to call it home, and I am honored to serve on the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration, thanks.
Mr. Clerk, we do have someone registered to speak in regards to...
We got Alderman McNeil. Frank, you wanna come up and sit on the horse you to talk?
No, he can't come up here no more.
Oh, I didn't see you, Frank. How you doing? Good evening, Mr. McNeil.
Good evening, Members, Mayor, and Members of the Council. I'm honored to be here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to serve again for the city of Springfield, and I think I've said enough words in this chamber to last for a lifetime. Thank you.
Be the shortest you've ever talked up here.
And, Mr. Clerk, we do have someone signed up to speak, Ms. Allen.
Mrs. Allen?
Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council Members. Thank you for having me. I just first want to start off by saying it's been an honor to serve on the Civil Service Commission for the past three years and more. It's been an honor to serve my community, and I look forward to continue to uphold that service and to, as a resident of this community, to continue that service, and always happy to clear up any misunderstandings and to ensure that we uphold the duties, because that's what we do here. We're in it for public service. So, I appreciate it, and if you have any questions for me, please let me know. Other than that, I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, so the young lady just spoke with the mayor's pleasure. I would like to do an amendment to the Civil Service Commission ordinances. I, I know that Tiffany Mathis is being appointed, but I would like to do amendment to read that she's being appointed to take the place of Larry Hemingway. He has moved to Chatham, and that seat is open. And then I would like to do, as a part of this amendment, that Mrs. Allen be reappointed with conditions with the mayor's office.
So move. Second.
Second to the motion.
Morning, boarder.
Question?
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
Corporations Council, can we do that?
The, the appointment power is with the office of the mayor, you know, to make an appointment, so the council cannot make an appointment in a legislative capacity. The amendment just clearing up replacement. As mentioned earlier, the mayor indicated that the replacement, Ms. Mathis would be replacing Mr. Hemming, who did move, move out of the city, so therefore cannot serve. And then the, Ms. Alman would continue to serve in the interim, you know, because the way the, the ordinances work, state law works, is you continue to serve until such time as there might be a replacement.
Thank you for the clarification. Are you...
And there, there was a, there was gonna be one or two other just corrections, and just why I mention it now. In the case of Alderman McNeil, he would be serving at-large instead of a member from the Tiff District, so we'll be making that correction or present that.
Thank you.
Would be an at-large member. And we'll reduce the other to writing, the, the one that you just made about the correction of the replacement.
Yes.
We'll make sure that is ready for the council.
Thank you. Clarification, please. So, he made him, he put a motion onto the floor, so is, are we not considering the motion on, on the floor? Are we, are you gonna bring it back at the city council?
You may make the amendment to clarify who the individual would be replacing, Mr. Hemming, who moved out.
Yes.
There's certainly not a problem. If you make that motion adopted, we'll, we'll correct that and bring it to the council. You're not, the council does not make appointments to commission.
Right.
You are in the position of to advise and consent, you know, if one is brought forward. So, the proper amendment would be relating to Mr. Hemming, and we'll make that correction if the, if the committee adopts that. That's...
So, we'll follow his motion to, to change the, to Mr. Hemming. Is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor say, whoa, do I ask? Are you done, Alderman Williams? Because you're still up there.
I'm done. That's from when I...
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. And then, oh, and now do I have a motion for the omnibus bill, omnibus ordinance?
Yes, for the debate agenda and as amended, the one.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Great.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Ordinance tabled remaining committee, 2021-337, 2022-157, 2022-163.
Alderman Williams?
Well, that was up from last time, but I do want to, I think it's in here. Yeah, I wanted to address 2022-157 and make a motion to bring that out of committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need to let everybody vote. Yeah.
I'm sorry. So, Alderwoman Conley?
Can we roll call?
You would like a roll call?
Just to bring it out of committee, not to place it on one of the agendas yet?
Oh, bring it out of committee is fine. I'm sorry.
Point of parliamentary procedure?
Yes.
Mr. Corporations Council, I just noticed this is on, it's been tabled. How many is it, how many votes would it take in the affirmative? If it has been tabled, it would require seven affirmative votes to take it from the table. Thank you.
Would you like to?
Yes.
Come first? Okay. 2022-157, an ordinance authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement number 21-SR-0008 for South Town Construction and Bone Training Center utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Or do you, I guess we need a vote to take it out of committee, or?
Well, you wanna roll?
Was there a motion to take out a committee, or no?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, did we have a second?
Yes.
The committee did, just, I'm sorry, may I help you just for a moment?
Yes, you can.
The Alderman McMinim's, you know, motion to be able to discuss is in order if the committee wants to discuss it. In order to take action, you know, send it on to the council, would require, because it has been tabled, would require super majority instead of a majority. A motion to discuss would require only a majority, if that clarifies it.
And it does, it doesn't take a simple, overwhelming majority to discuss?
That, that is correct.
Fine.
So, do I...
So, I second the motion to discuss.
And I say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, and now we can open it up for discussion. Would you like to press your button to speak? Since you want to discuss, is there an Alderman McMinim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think when we discussed this a month ago, there was a problem with the, the contract recipient being, there was a dispute regarding a pension obligation to the laborers, and I believe the individual made a payment to the, I think it was about a $5,000 payment to the laborers. And is anyone familiar with that, to, to come fully paid up with the laborers? Has that issue been resolved? Does anybody know what the status is of that situation? Because I think that's the reason why we held this a month or two ago. Mr. Mayor, do you know anything about it? Sorry, Calvin, I didn't see you there. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. As it relates to the $4,000 check to be paid, a check was mailed to the pension fund, and the check was returned. When the check was paid, I, I put pending audit findings, and I received a letter back. They said that they wanted me to send them a check for the amount that, that they said that I owed, and they wanted me to disregard the $10,000 findings that was proved that I overpaid. They wanted me to wash it, give them the money, and admit to guilt and be done. Since then, last Friday, I sent them another check, and I put in the notes pending audit findings. So, that check is there. Whether it's been cashed or not, I cannot confirm at this time.
Thank you for that explanation.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, thank you for coming tonight, Calvin. So, you know, I've always had heartburn with this, with this situation, because I don't know when the council became a collection agency for anybody other than our departments and people who owe us the city. And somehow we got caught up in them owing you, you owing them, and, you know, all, all this other stuff, which to me shouldn't matter, because it's not our business. We should be in the business of, of abiding by our own rules, and we probably never should have put this and held this in committee. So, that's my purpose of tonight, of bringing it out of committee to vote this thing up or down based on its merits. He tried to pay it. He did pay it, and I just think we need to move forward, Madam Chair.
Alderman Redpath?
Mr. Pitts, did you send the check to them and write, is the check in protest, you sent the check?
No, I didn't write in protest.
According to the laborers, they said that wrote on the check, I'm, I'm sending this check and, signing this check in protest. Is that not true?
Yeah, so that's not correct. I didn't write signing in protest. But my concern to you, Mr. Redpath, is your conversation with labor and comparing it to an ordinance that is put out to serve our community. I have been in construction for 22 years. I've worked on several projects. I've worked as an electrician for several years, and there's never been any issues. This concern, it came up two years after the project was complete, three weeks after the passing of my late wife, and all of it, you know, or none of it made any sense to me. I paid in... all of it, you know, or none of it made any sense to me. Um, I paid in order to go over, um, the findings and I shared that information with you guys. Um, and, you know, from my stance, I think that money is owed me. Uh, I wrote the check just to get past that because, um, without any understanding of how it is a question or it's stopping what we want to do for our community, um, you know, was, was an issue for me. But, you know, I got past that. And as I told you all, the first time, the money was never the problem. $4,000 is not an issue. But Mr. Redpath, you can send me a letter and say I owe you $4,000 tomorrow. I'm going to need you to prove it. And when I get my findings, I want you to look at it and I want to be treated fair, just like everybody else.
And we want to treat you fairly. And, and I was just, I just want to tell you that we have a history of not approving projects of the similar type. Cause we did it with Mr. Lawrence down at the, down at the Ferguson building when he owed the same situation. And we stopped that. And so that this is not, this is not new to anything. This is, this happened before. Once you get it cleared up, I'm going to support it. Okay? That's, I'm, I'm going to tell you that.
Well, so I'll, I'll tell you from the last letter they wrote, that they wrote clearing it up mean, um, give me the money that you, that I said you owe me and forget the money that I owe you. And I don't think that a grant that is gonna, uh, totally serve this, this community and the people that's working with the training, uh, that money that is assigned is going to pay the participants. It's going to get houses done and it's going to pay the trainers that assist me. Okay? I, I personally have $0 written in that grant for me. It's not for me at all. So, um, but for you to tell me that I need to forget money that someone else owed me because they says not cleared up, I, I don't understand that. And you'll never get my favor as relates to that. Okay?
Alderman Gregory? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Williams?
So I, I, I personally believe when a memo says anything, it doesn't matter. It doesn't affect the cash value of the check. So again, we're, we're, we're asking questions and holding this man accountable for things that doesn't make sense. You can write what you want on the memo of your check. The check's good, cash it. If they don't want to cash it, they don't have to cash it. They're, they are choosing not to take his check because of what he wrote in a memo. After he already got over the fact that we're tying a community project that, that has nothing to do with what, what they got going on. But we tie that together as a council. I just think that's wrong. We shouldn't be doing this. I think whatever he wrote in the memo should matter. They need to cash the check if they were serious about being paid. And we have yet. Are we going to hold anything that they want from us because they owe him? We should not be on this side of the ledger dealing with any of this type of stuff. It should have never been considered from the beginning.
Just a matter of clarification, the bank would not cash the check, not the, not the labor people.
That, that's not true. I, I had my bank.
The bank?
Yeah. I, I called my bank and it was clear that I wrote that check. And if that check comes through, yeah, to cash it. Absolutely.
Alderman Williams, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Calvin, for, for that explanation of what you done with those checks. Now two checks. Um, you know, in the end, you know, this situation, I hope one way or the other, we can pass it here tonight or that it gets cleared up. Because while we are arguing over things like this, a community hangs in the balance. And, and, and that's what greatly, um, is, is, is important. And that's what matters. Um, i- i- is our community that is hanging in the balance. So, um, you know, I, I support this effort. I support this ordinance like I did before. Um, I wish we wasn't at this point. Um, because again, while we, while we, while we discussing these things, the community hangs in the balance for improvement. So, um, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. Um, Alderman McMiniman?
Uh, Mr. Pitts, uh, if I can ask, so what I understand is you've written another check. The, the first check had something written in the memo section of the check. And now you've written another check that I think you said you mailed yesterday. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it was written last Friday.
Oh, last Friday. Okay. Did you write anything in the memo section of that check?
Yeah. So I, I wanted pending the audit.
Pending audit.
Response that I, I sent. Um, and, and as it relates to cashing the check, uh, to move the project forward, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
You know, again, the money's not the issue. But, you know, at what point will, um, you know, will we ever, you know, take a stance? Because I, I understand, you know, the dollars and I understand that they, you know, um, you know, looking at average $23, $24 an hour out of every union member. So, you know, they're, 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 they're collecting millions of dollars a day. And, you know, what I would hate to think is that, you know, the money that they make, um, as a business, which I don't knock, I hope that that money doesn't buy our council or, you know, waive you guys with, um, you know, to make decisions that advances the community, a community that's been neglected, might I add, for, um, for years.
All right. Mr. Pitts?
You know?
I think, uh, by next, a week from tonight, to, to, a week from tonight, which will be a passage night, we may have an answer from the laborers, whether they've accepted your check and you're in good standing with the laborers. Is that possibly what we'll, what we'll have next Tuesday night? I hope. So maybe this is a moot point right now because hopefully it'll all be resolved by next, a week from tonight.
Yeah. Well, I mean, from you guys' standpoint, it'll be resolved. But, you know, when I, when I bid at the project, I knew that I paid a prevailing rate that was higher than this one. And since I went through all of this and I paid an audit, I'm sorry, but I, I just want you to know that I, I think it's only fair, you know, because had I owed the $4,000, it's obvious that they pressing me for it. So if I overpaid $10,800, I think it's only fair that I get that back. And I, I hope that I have your support, like you guys have their support. I mean, like they have your support. I hope that, you know, since it's something that obviously you guys get involved in, I would like to be able to bring that back. And I would like for you guys to help me get that if it gets to that point.
So you're doing the honorable thing. You've written a second check and we'll see how that, how that is, um, um, received by the laborers. So thank you for trying to resolve it.
Alderman McMiniman, are we asking that this be held until next week to see if the check has cleared? Cause Mr. Pitts said he doesn't know if the check has cleared at this moment.
Well, we can't pass anything tonight anyway. So I guess it's kind of, who cares what we do with, with the, um, with the, we can just leave it sit, but with the intention to bring it out of committee next week if, if this check is all resolved.
Well.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't work for the laborers. You might, I don't.
No, 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 I'm not stuck. I'm just trying to.
But you said contingent on what the laborers think. They're not the city council. And, and Springfield needs to know that. The laborers are not the city council. So I'm moving that we vote on this up or down tonight because we should not be doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I just want to punish Mr. Pitts.
We're holding him and paying bill collector for, uh, organization. Are we not all doing?
No.
Then what are we doing?
I think that we're all trying to work together. And as my colleagues just said, if it showed that it's clear, they're all in support of it. So instead of voting it down tonight, when it shows that it's clear.
So, so, so that's what we do.
And wait. And then he asked us, will we have the support, will he have the support of us if they owe him $10,000? But I do want to be clear. He made a statement about the laborers owning, owning us or however he worded it. Nobody, the unions do not own us.
So we shouldn't have a problem voting? Then we shouldn't have a problem voting tonight?
But you want it to pass. We gotta look up here and, excuse me.
Call the question.
Excuse me. We have to look around the horseshoe and we gotta look.
I just think the vote would tell us if we're owned or not. Tell us who is owned by the union or not.
And that's fine.
It's my, it's my, yeah, that's right.
I'm trying to.
I'm, I'm, I'm calling a question then. I, I'll, yeah, there you go. We'll end it like that.
That's fine.
Just, just to respond to that statement, um, if, if it's a moot point and, and it don't matter, we shouldn't have an issue with serving our community. Because if it wasn't an issue, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
I just was responding to what you said.
And did you get an answer?
So as far as, as, I'm talking.
Did you get an answer from them when they said, would you have your back? When you come back and say they owe me that they're going, did you get an answer?
No, no, I, I didn't. I didn't. But, you know, we'll, we'll see.
Alderman Mc, uh, Alderman Gregory?
This question for Corporation Council. If for this situation with this money owed, is there anything in our code that prevents, prevents this, prevents us from executing this ordinance, sir?
Well, the, the decision to, um, if you're talking tonight for the committee to take action, make a, send it to the council, that's a purely legislative decision. So we don't have an, uh, an ordinance per se that says what you should do. Um, the present procedural circumstance is that this particular, uh, ordinance is tabled. Under our rules, it requires seven votes and that would be the same even at city council, you know, to, to bring it forward, even at city council. Uh, so that is purely a, um, legislative, um, issue. Now, um, it's a slippery slope when you get into things that are typically not inside of the, uh, city jurisdiction. Uh, but these are legislative issues. These are policy issues. So we don't have a specific ordinance that says you should do A, B, or C.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh, are you done Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Um, Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Pitts, I just want to say first of all, and, and we talked after the last time you were here. I appreciate what you're doing. I, I really do. What you need to understand is I'm looking at this as an expenditure of, of tax dollars. These are public dollars. And to me, it's critically important that we value that public dollars and that prevailing wage concept, that those go hand in hand. So that means that we need to know that benefits that were connected with prevailing wage have been paid properly. And, and I mean, we've just seen tonight, we don't actually have an answer to this yet. So this is not a, a commentary on you at all, sir. I, I, we talked last time and I have a lot of respect for what you're trying to do. But what you're, we're also trying to do is see that this program creates new employees who could possibly work on publicly funded projects. I'm not going to undermine the value of what that means. Public dollars need to follow prevailing wage. These questions don't need to be tossed around for us. It is important to me. And I will tell you, um, it's not a good idea to come up here and ask if, if any of us is owned by someone else. I, no, I'm not done yet, sir. I, I just want to let you know this because I take this job very seriously.
Uh huh.
And I vote from my heart, from my conscience and from a good place of good policy every single time.
Okay.
I would like to see that the people that you're working with in this project, that they qualify for union jobs. And they know what it means to have benefits that provides them health and sick time and vacation time. Those are all critical things. And I'm not saying that you didn't do that. But clearly we have a question here and we need this question answered.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, I understand and, and thank you for that. And I, I hear you. I, I had a conversation with you before and I've also, um, you know, heard responses on some of the other issues as it relates to the, the black community. And, and a lot of times what, what I hear don't match what's, what's happening. So, you know, I, but.
And I'm going to tell you something. No.
So I'm not done. Hold on. And the other thing I would like to say also, um, you're, you're looking at prevailing rate and you want to make sure that guidelines are followed so that guys can get union jobs. Um, you know, the percentage of black people working union jobs. You know, those numbers are really low. I never hear any of you guys bring up that discussion as it relates to the black community and the black men and women that need those jobs too. And I will also tell you that I've bid it and I've done union jobs that, I mean, I've done jobs that are prevailing rate. And as long as you follow the guidelines, you know, you don't have to be hired. We don't have to keep begging to be hired by a union.
And I.
Me, as a contractor, I can get a project and as long as I follow those guidelines, as I do, we can employ individuals in our community and those individuals can work jobs, make money and, and have an earnest living, take vacations and do all the things that all of the other union workers do and have done for years that don't look like we do. We deserve the same opportunity.
Absolutely you do. I agree with you 100%. And while you may not have heard that conversation about diversity and, and equity in hiring, I have had that conversation in many levels and many, many different venues. So I want you to know.
That's what this training to do.
Can you let her finish?
That's what this training will do.
Can you let her finish?
I just want to let you know that I think that.
But can you let her finish?
Yeah, I've, I've, we talked about that. And I understand exactly where you're going with this. Um, I love the concept where you're building something here that the city's engaged with, where we're providing a path to a career pa, of a career.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's critically important. I just want you to know, you're making, there are a lot of assumptions here. And, and those assumptions, we need to be very careful about that.
Well.
I, no, no, I'm not, no, I'm going to finish.
Okay, get finished.
No, I'm going to finish. So I'm, I'm just asking, asking you to have a little confidence in us so that we can know that what we're seeing with $400,000 is going to go to a great project and that we've got relationships with unions. And yes, I'd like to see these, I'd like to see people go more, I'd like to see a lot more kids, young adults in this community, moving into good paying, solid jobs where they are treated like a valuable part of our community. That's critical. We know we need homes. We need homework. We need, I mean, the construction field is booming. We're here to work with you. I'm just telling you, instead of coming up here and asking if we're being controlled by someone else, have a little confidence that we need to have some clarity on an issue where there, where right now I don't see clarity.
Okay. So I must have struck a nerve and I apologize. I said, I would hope that, that's what I said. I did not say no one was controlled. So if I struck a nerve with anyone, let me apologize.
Thank you.
Okay?
That does strike a nerve. It is very hard to get to this seat. And I got to this seat so that I can do my job with integrity.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
I accept your apology.
Um, any other discussion? I think you called the question, right? Or what are we doing? Let me just be clear on.
It was a motion for cut, for discussion. So.
Okay. Um, do I have a second?
We're done with discussions.
Already done with the discussion.
Now where are we at? Didn't you ask to call the question?
Discussion's over. I believe that, are you, Alderman?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Are you going for what, or, um?
I, I want to vote.
Want to vote to take it off the table?
That's it, yeah.
We need a second there.
I guess someone needs to still second him calling the question.
Well, we, we second the call and question already.
Okay. So all those in favor say?
No. Roll call.
Okay.
It's, it's for.
Just if I could, just procedurally for a moment, the, uh, committee had adopted a, a motion to discuss. If the discussion is concluded, then it would be proper to make another motion. If the motion would be to take it from the table, then it would be a motion to remove from the table, to send on to the council.
Correct.
Uh, and then that would need a second. And then there would be a, a vote as to that, you know, to take it from the table, to send it, uh, to the council.
So now you need a motion.
Okay. So, um, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, to take it from the table and send it on to the council.
Second.
Then I say, are all those in favor say aye?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Purchase?
No.
Alderman McMiniman?
Uh, Alderman, uh, Williams, if this fails tonight, I'll renew the motion next week to, um, get a vote on the merits. I'm a yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Five noes and three yays. Madam Chair, it fails.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'm motion to move 2022, 260 and, excuse me, 259 and 260 to the front of the agenda for time's sake and the audience.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2022, 259, an ordinance approving small business redevelopment assistance to several businesses using the Far East Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount not to exceed $404,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Uh, motion for consent.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Yes. Same question. Is there, is this a, is this a prevailing wage job? Is this a, is, is, is a redevelopment agreement have to be made? Corporation Council?
Any of the, um, monies used for Tiff, for, for, uh, Tiff, for, uh, construction would require prevailing wage.
And is a redevelopment agreement required? Because it is a redevelopment agreement.
We would, uh, because of there being, what I, uh, assumed that we would do is we would end up requiring each business to, um, basically, uh, assign an effective development agreement or a grant agreement that would incorporate it. That's the practice that we've used on the other CDBG and the ARPA money and so. That's the practice that we've used on the other CDBG and the ARPA money and so on. So there will be an agreement that must be signed by each uh business for the uh TIF component, and then also for the cannabis uh component.
So the next question is that the cannabis money is designated for these businesses for this area, so there's no question about the cannabis money, but the TIF amounts, do they come from which TIF?
Far East.
The east side?
Far, far east TIF, it would be the area where they're located, you wouldn't, it would have to be the businesses uh would use the TIF within, that they're located in.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, um, Chair, and I I actually wanted to, I think I was looking at the other one, I just want to make sure um, we got the report on the fund balance for this. So are these, will these funds, um, I don't know, Mayor, or if we have someone from economic development here?
I think Ravi's, Ravi's here.
You're probably gonna want to stay up front for the next one, too. So I just want to make sure, what's the timeline for businesses to get these funds?
Um, as soon as the uh ordinance would pass, we would just review the uh, the applications, the scope of works, and uh award them as uh the work commences.
So you you don't review the applications before you bring people into city council?
We do, we vetted the applications, we reviewed them, but uh in order for the exact itemization to happen for those funds, and to make sure that their eligible costs for TIF versus the eligible costs for cannabis don't overlap, we want to ensure that they're reviewed.
And then you've given information to all of these businesses so they know exactly how to
Mm-hmm.
delineate their funds and?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, so I'm, I'm gonna take this opportunity to not only speak on this, but this totality of this, 259 and 260. So this is a, um, our first disbursement of our cannabis business grants to the area that that we uh promised to do this. And um, that's the specific boundaries on the east side that this cannabis um allocation was was designated for. Um, and and along with that, this this TIF ordinance that is before you today is, is to really help um um those businesses get closer to their their end goal. Um, between these businesses, there is approximately 130 years of business in our community, between just six of them, six longstanding ones. Um, there's one historical site. The six um businesses, just six of them, have approximately 33 employees in that community. Seven of them will be to potentially new, um, and and bringing some new things to our community. Um, approximately 18 of these um businesses are in our low to moderate income um areas um of $25,000 or less. So um, these businesses, um, all um are in a area of need, and um I I think this is a true example of us executing, um, you know, this this cannabis grant and uh making it useful to the area most impacted by the war on drugs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, the Far East TIF um covers a lot of Ward III as well as the cannabis map. Um, so this impacts Ward III. Uh, I think it's a good thing for Ward III and a good kickstart for some of of the activity that these, this monies are going to be used on, uh, as far as helping the citizens of Ward III. So I 100% support this and recommend that we pass this, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Williams. Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you, and uh I I had a uh good conversation with Alderman Gregory last night. Um, I just want to make, uh, one of my biggest concerns when I first looked at it is, okay, we're, we're doing a first round dispersments on the cannabis, which is exactly what we, we wanted, wanted to be able to do with that money, and that's, that's great that we're able to do it. What I want to make sure is that, um, is there a, that we have certain timelines or or what? That people, we don't want the same groups to keep coming back and getting the cannabis money. We want to spread it around to other businesses that, you know, to to help. And I want to make sure, and I I was gonna ask, uh, Corporation Council, is that in the language of the, of our, of our rules of the cannabis money? Um, because I do think that it is important that we don't continue to go to the same businesses and that, that we do allow other businesses out out there to to utilize it.
Is that a Corporation Council question?
Yeah, I I was simply gonna say that I'll, I'll check the original uh ordinance and program that was set up. Uh, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I will check it before the council meeting.
Ravi, is there a timeline? I know you answered Alderwoman, uh, Conley, but you said once they turned their application in, you've already vetted them, so now they've moved into the next step. Now, how long do they wait for the process to get reimbursement once it's completed? Is it like a two week, a 30 day?
It just uh depends on the scope of work and exactly what they're, what they're intending to do. Um, so on some of the projects, we would obviously wait till we kind of get the, you know, construction work started, you know, and and that renovation process happens. On other, you know, dispersments, it may be a lot sooner, you know, per, perhaps paying lease agreements, you know, or payments uh for payroll, you know, that wouldn't require additional bids, or ensuring that, to Alderman Conley's uh uh earlier point, you know, ensuring that prevailing wage is followed, you know, those requirements are met, you know, so.
Um, Alderman Gregory?
Um, I just, I just wanted to, um, in our original rules, um, it is noted, um, the last point that the war can only be once. I just wanted to confirm that with you.
Only one, for?
Only once.
For how long?
Only be granted once, that there is no um um timeframe on it, so I would assume it's indefinitely.
Okay, thank you.
The housing portion has um some different stipulations on it where they can't um apply after a certain amount of time.
Right, it's not the same for TIF, it was just a.
Nope.
Cannabis, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath.
That was my question, um, Alderman Gregory, that, you know, we, we've sent money over for businesses um um towards two and three, but are, I thought the CDBG monies were supposed to be able to use for homeowners to do repairs on that, is that, is that correct, Mayor?
That program.
And is, and are we distributing that cut, that, the CDBG money over there?
Yeah, this is uh for businesses, we've done the uh.
I understand what this one is, I was asking.
As well.
Just for the clarification on the CBDG. So if somebody needs a roof fixed or needs to do insulation or put windows in, you have that, and that, that money is distributed through the CBGD funds, correct?
Yeah, it's a different, and we would vet each one of those case by case, you know, to assess, like you said, Alderman, you know, what the emergency needs are, you know, we have the Emergency Minor Repair Home Program as well as, you know, our home deferred loans, you know, that we offer. Um, we have a great housing division, you know, to our department as well, with uh Krista Colas and Elizabeth Jones, you know, for housing needs, you know, so there's a lot of work that's gonna be upcoming as well as ongoing right now, and especially the LMI Census Trax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. Alderman Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean answered what I was gonna do.
Sean, do you, Alderman Gregory?
My, my last thing is, is I really want to compliment our, our economic development team, Ravi, Tristan, he's from Justine Peterson, he's, they, they really done a good job, I've seen them out in the community, going to places. Um, I went to another longstanding business, and he's like, Ravi came over and talked to me, and unfortunately, I'm not ready yet. But but he did do that, so, you know, and that's what's needed, you know, for for this thing to work, is for us to get out in the communities and really see these things, um, see the businesses, talk to the people. And, you know, they've done a good job with that, and and I compliment you, sir, and and Ms. Krista as well, um, who who handles our CBGD um um information, it's, it's tough, it's a lot of rules with these things, but, you know, they, they, they took a good time, and when I seen the list, I was happy with it, and I, you know, I, I wish we could do every, all 69 of those applications, so, you know, hopefully after this one's dispersed, we'll be able to go back to that list that didn't make it and and uh get them prepped and ready for next year's allocation.
And Sean, I want to echo that too, because even when some of the applicants don't qualify, Mayor, um, Ravi, he makes sure, he tries to give them another resource to go to, and we just don't leave them high and dry. So I do commend you for actually walking them through the whole entire process and also following up with them after you sent them somewhere else, too. Um, Alderman Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alderman Gregory, I just want to thank you for reaching out to me and having the conversations about this, and tru- truly trying to make a difference. Uh, those things are extremely important, and obviously there are needs out there, needs far outweigh the app, uh, the uh awards that are uh being proposed this evening. I do have, it was, it's somewhat germane to the, the ordinance, uh, and and Alderman Redpath kind of went in in this uh direction. But I'll just ask, you and I have talked before about, you know, trying to utilize some city, city funds, whether it's TIF funds or what have you, for the reinvestment in those areas that are within the TIF boundaries or CDBG boundaries, or like uh property owners that are having difficulty, they may have roof issues, is the roof and siding issues are the things you and I discussed, is that still your intention on pursuing something along those lines as well?
Absolutely, absolutely, I think we have, you know, our cannabis program is 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 rolling well, right? We put $100,000 in that um a a year, and I believe $76,000 has been dispersed, and he still has a list of about 100 people on that list. Um, housing is 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 a major thing, and we've taken down what, 70 since I've been here. So we've taken down 70 houses, he's got a list of about 100 people who have some type of housing repair. Some of them have some unique circumstances, we're working with um one of the last houses um that that is uh on the east side from the Hay Homes era. Um, you know, they, they're in a unique situation, they need some work, they call a lot, so we're trying to, you know, see how we can help them, um, so we don't go, go finding them every day, you know, you know, so, so absolutely, and, you know, I I look forward to.
I appreciate that, and I'd love to continue the dialogue with you, and and you know, it's, it's just so important because as you and I have discussed, it encourages the continuation of homeownership and and reinvestment in communities, and and that's something we desperately need, so.
Absolutely, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Alderman Donnelly. Alderman Williams?
Yes, so did um, I hear correctly, on um, only once for cannabis?
Business.
For business, uh, what about the residential?
The residential has a timeframe.
Timeframe, so, uh, so so what about fire and pension? They, they, they use cannabis money, uh, that Conley put in, so is that only once, the corporate council?
The, um, again, I'll, I'll have to look at the ordinance, my memory was that there was a division of the funds uh to be directed in certain areas, but I can get that detail for you.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I have a problem if we're gonna tell the citizens you can only use it once, but then we sit up and use it yearly, even though it's for a good purpose, w- w- we just gotta be a little more fair than that. So please, I I would like to get an answer to that question, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Langfelder?
Yeah, we'll uh have to take a look at it, because my recollection, um, you can uh be awarded up to $100,000. And so we track that, and then once you hit the 100,000, that's what my understanding was for the cap, but we'll have to check it, and then whatever the, you know, interest of the council is at that point in time, it can always be changed, but uh we'll check the parameters and bring them back Tuesday, so everybody has a clear understanding what the uh, what the protocol is with uh accessing the funds.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. Sure.
If I just could make one more, one more comment, I just really wanted to thank uh the businesses that are behind me. You know, they took time out of their day to come here, this is what it's about, it's about the need of the community, you know, and I just want to recognize, just behind me, there's so many individuals that have been doing what they're doing longer than I've been alive, you know, and that's remarkable.
Ravi.
Hey, don't let the gray hairs fool you, okay? But uh, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, one statistic that really stood out was that there is over 454 hours, I mean, 454 years of operations between these 22 businesses.
That's awesome.
And just wanted, you know, since I, Kemp Page, Teresa Haley, Calvin Pitts, uh, Lawrence Bowden, I mean, there's so many behind me, Torrance Thomas, I mean, these business owners are really here engaged, and it was just an honor for me to work with them and to understand exactly what their needs are, you know, because we want to be able to create programs that fit the need, you know? Um, there's no point in creating a program if there's no need, or, you know, the need isn't apparent, you know, so I just wanted to say that, um, you know, the thanks goes to the business owners, you know, many of them, you know, came to me, didn't have the workings of a business plan or where to go to have one. Um, so when we talk about equitable access, I think it's important to recognize, you know, community players like Justine Peterson, you know, Small Business Development Center was a great asset, Black Chamber of Commerce, you know, all these other community resources, Innovates, Springfield, DSI, they're all part of this, you know, in order for us to get the word out to help as many individuals in the most impoverished part of our community.
One in a million Inc. as well, they was help, over there helping, too.
Um, thank you, Ravi. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thanks. Alderman Williams, you, you seem to be upset about the cannabis ordinance. Um, you weren't on the council when this was drafted, and 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 it took a lot at the time for us to even get the votes to pass to legalize cannabis here in Springfield. And you, we have two wards that get money from it. And I'm pretty sure that there's other wards that if you looked at the, at the census tracts that would qualify. So if you want to, if you want to relook at how we do things, I'm, I'm more than happy to open it up, but it may not be good for your ward. Because right now, it's, it's just two wards. It could end up being, well, I know my ward doesn't have any at this time, but.
Thank you.
But there's a lot of, but there's a lot of other wards. I'm, I'm sure four, five, six, that would, would love to have some of this money. So, you know, the pensions, we put it toward pensions because we got the problem.
I just asked if it's one time. I just asked if it's one time.
Play no order.
You, you keep bringing this up.
Play no order, Roy.
But, but I'm just telling you that if you want to open it up, we're, we can open it up again, I, I don't have a problem, but I don't think it'll be good, because I know, you know, there's other Aldermen and Alderwomen that would like to, like to have access to some of that money.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Um, actually, this, this was my first ordinance on city council, was, was getting recreational sales in in Springfield authorized. And um, our now Senator Turner and I worked on this, um, because we wanted it to, we wanted this ordinance, we wanted this program to reflect the actual intent of what was going on with the state legislation. It was absolutely important to see these dollars, I mean, this is, this is 1.5% of the city tax. Uh, we have, we have a city tax, a 3% tax, 1.5% of that, one, or 1.5%, whatever, goes into this program. I want you to know, I am thrilled to see over $600,000 going out the door. It took a little long, um, and I'm not blaming you, Ravi, that's, I'm not doing that, but I, I will tell you, I'm, I'm going down this list, and um, I see some fabulous businesses, I see some of my favorite restaurants, and they're doing things that are going to make them ju, really step their game up and make this, this really exciting. I'm seeing new equipment, we're, so there's sales tax being generated. We've got Teresa Haley, you're in here with a job with internships and opportunities, very excited to see this. That said, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Okay, um, I was actually talking to someone about this program the other day. Um, I was talking about how we've got with, between the cannabis program and the TIF, 1.2, what, 1.25 almost, million dollars going out the door? And they said, hey, so show me, give me some more information about your cannabis program, how does this work? And I went to our website, and I looked, and I looked, and I could not find anything. So I asked our deputy mayor where this information was, and apparently, you know, the applications have come down. I would like to see a permanent page on our website so that other businesses can look to this, can know what they need to do, can make plans for next year, so that we can point to this program and explain exactly what we're doing so that homeowners can get on that list. I mean, you, Sean, you actually, I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory.
It's all good.
You answered my question, you didn't call me, like you called these two gentlemen to my left, but um, you did answer my question. We have, we didn't even get a third, really, of the businesses who applied for this. So I'd like to know that we have a website that people can go to, that these, all these businesses who didn't get money yet, that homeowners who are interested in this can, can make a plan. I, I, I like to plan things, I like to know where we're going and what I need to do. If you give me a list of what I need to do for you, that's very helpful, so. And this may be on our website, um, you're gonna have to highlight it somewhere, because this is an important program. This is making a big impact in our community, and it's critical that we make sure, yes, that other businesses know about this. So I, thank you very much for, for that. Um, I'm thrilled to see this work getting started. I, it sounds to me like with the cannabis money, and I was gonna wait until we got to the next ordinance, but we're all talking cannabis now anyway, so, again, I'm gonna ask you, what are the timelines for these businesses to access these funds? Because are we doing this as a repayment program? Do they have to put, I mean, I, so do they have to present receipts? I, I've worked, I know how slow reimbursement process can go, and these are not large businesses, so I'd like to make sure that we're not keeping people on a hotspot for too long.
Absolutely, we're gonna make it a priority to get that money out to the businesses as quickly as we can, you know, um, so that way, you know, they're not held up for, you know, permits, they're not held up, you know, for checks, you know, so we're gonna anticipate, you know, if it's a reimbursement, if it's structured that way for that particular business, you know, we're gonna make sure that they have those timely payments in the event that they do need to make down payments to contractors, make sure that money is uprooted, you know, so we want to be able to work with the businesses and make it as accommodating and flexible as possible, while still ensuring that we're compliant, you know, on our standards, and ensuring that we're not, uh, you know, blurring the gaps between our two respective funds. between our two respective funding sources here.
Wonderful, thank you, I did want to hear that, and then the website?
Yes, the website is definitely gonna be a priority Alderwoman Conley, so
Thank you.
It will, it will definitely be robustly apparent, you know, and individuals can come in, you know, and express interest, call our office, you know, and, and get more, get more applicants, that's what we, that's what we want.
And are people allowed to, can people apply online for these grants?
They can, currently our application window is, is closed.
Right, but, but people can apply online.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So where is this website housed? Where's the page for this program on our website?
Yeah, so we're working to read, we're working to re, re, uh, redevelop that. Um, when we first had it, it was for the application portal and then once the application portal uh, closed, unfortunately, the information was taken off, you know, the website, so now we're working to put that back, so it'll be up there by next week.
Wonderful, thank you, because I, I really do think this is a model that, that other cities look to.
Absolutely.
And, and should be, for us reinvesting in both, you know, underpaid debt that we have, that, that is important to, and reinvesting in our community and making it stronger, so I would very much like to see that, and if you could shoot me an email when that page is up, I would appreciate it.
You got it Alderman Conley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Alderwoman Conley, Alderman Williams.
Yes, so uh, to answer uh, ha- uh, Ward ten, um, Alderman's question, I wasn't here when this got, or maybe it wouldn't look this way, I, I have looked at the legislative intent of the statute. I'm still trying to figure out where uh, fire and police come in and where their intention was to pay pensions to them. So I, I did look at it and I do see where it talks about blighted communities, about businesses, about what, what this program is actually gonna do, that's there, but I haven't found out the other piece. So yes, when I ask questions like that, and then you're gonna say they're gonna use it one time, of course, I'm gonna say, so of course the pension's only one time then, unless I learn different. He said he's gonna look for the answer and he's gonna look for the answer. I have a difference in agreement on how, how this ordinance was put together. I've said that to Sean many times, uh, we spoke to uh, what's going on about the one-time use and use another. This wasn't a good fit for Ward three either. That's why we didn't get as much as Ward two got, but I supported it because it's important, it's a good thing, Ward two has more need, I understand all that. But we are in that census tract, I didn't create this census tract. If you guys didn't get it right and there's Aldermen sitting up here that feel like they should have a part of the money, well, you guys should have done the thing right the first time. That ain't my fault because I voiced my opinion on what I think the legislative intent is. So I, I appreciate it if you just not make it like I'm just so negative about it. These are important questions. People ask me every day about marijuana and we taking care of police and fire, uh, something that, where's that, where's that at? So that's why I act like this and I behave like this, because sometimes things like this need to be said. I'm gonna be changing somehow how we doing things so that my ward benefits more the next round, because I'm in that map, I'm in that census tract. You may have a spec, you may have a spec.
I do, I.
Hey, well, that's fine, get it right, you should've got it right, you was on the council.
I was.
When, when it came, you was on the council. I didn't choose towards Alderman Hanauer, I did not choose this, I got on and this is what it was. So we need to be clear about that, thank you.
Alderman Williams, I wasn't up here and I have some of that in the census tract too. But Alderman, uh, Gregory?
So, so the, 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 and, and I, and I, we could call the question after this, I know my boy.
No, we got one more person.
But, but, but when we talk about, yes, yes ma'am.
I was saying Chuck, hold on, we got one more person.
When we talk about this map that everyone's talking about, this is the disproportionately mapped from the state that the state released for people like me and whoever else would want to open up a cannabis business. So when we looked at that map as I walked, worked with Alderman Turner and Alderman Conley on what we're gonna do with these funds, um, we looked at our city's most affected area, and yes, there is a, a spec here and a spec there, but we looked at the totality in the area and that was the east side. So it does cover some of Ward three, but in the end, Ward two is the majority minority ward, it's the poorest ward in our city, so I, 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 I dig and I dig, I dig for the, for the funding that we solely deserve to rebound from what, from how it is. Um, so, so whatever we do with this cannabis money, Ward two, I, we, we have to be able to still um, operate and, and, and use these excess of funds. So, you know, my colleague, trust me, this ain't the first time that I've heard this from him about this, this police and fire pension funds. Um, and, and, and what, you know, should have been done and shouldn't have been done. It's the deal that, that we did make and we can revisit it, however, I will never not vote for the one point five percent to be for this half of the ward. Now, if we want to take some of the police and fire pension money and, and divvy it out between the other three wards that, that have it, so be it, have at it. But I think, you know, you know, um, the east side and especially for Ward two deserves every, everything we get in more, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Oh, you know what, I should've taken that off, Alderman Gregory, covered what I was gonna say and then went a little further, but we're good.
And.
Thank you Alderman.
Mayor Langfelder, you're really using that button today.
I'm learning. Actually, the cannabis information is out there, you have to go under the city's website, which is Springfield dot IL dot US. And then under city departments, it's Office of Planning and Economic Development. And then across the top, it's Business Resources and it's the first link when you click on that and that has the map and uh, information associated with it.
If I could, uh, thank you Mayor, um, I did not look there, um, if we could just have that, that information also, maybe just the summary of the program under like, with the, I looked at the TIF's programs is where, where I ended up, so um, just as long as the information is out there, that's my concern, so that people know again and can make plans.
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone, so we have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's the motion, consent?
Consent.
All right, aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, two sixty, an ordinance approving small business redevelopment assistance to several businesses using, utilizing cannabis tax funds in an amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars for the Office of Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, Mr. Clerk.
All right, now we go back to. All right, CWLP, twenty twenty-two, two thirty-one, an ordinance, amending ordinance number two fifty-five dash zero six dash two one that approved and authorized an execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for selected late Springfield marginal properties to be used in the Illinois Recreational Access Program, IRAP, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, second.
Yeah, it's been a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two thirty-two, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW twenty-three dash zero four dash two three, three Ford F two-fifties for the Water Department with Morrow Brothers Ford Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say, oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Just, I'm sorry Chair, um, I just want to make sure these are the ones that we discussed during the budget, but, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, through two thirty-three, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-three dash zero four dash two five, HP ProBook, four fifty laptops and docks with DataBit incorporated in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, second.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two thirty-four, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-two, three dash zero four dash three one, groundwater and H eight analysis with Tech Lab Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two thirty-five, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of proposal UE twenty-three dash zero one, removal and beneficial use of synthetic jimson for a one-year term with the Continental Cement Company LLC for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Second.
Um, we have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two thirty-six, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for engineering services to evaluate carbon capture at Dolman four, unit four, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Mr. Clerk, um, Director Doug has requested to hold two thirty-six, two thirty-six, do I have a second?
Uh, I move that we hold this in committee.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two thirty-seven, an ordinance approving a professional services proposal with Evan Lloyd Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for architectural and engineering services for the CWLP Water Distribution and Engineering Facility Project for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Public Works, twenty twenty-two, two thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly Incorporated in a payment in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand for engineering services for a sanitary sewer investigation in the northeast area, plot area investigation for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Sorry Chair.
I'm sorry, discussion, oops, I'm sorry.
You're on a rule and I'm sorry to break that up, um, I just wanted to ask and I apologize, I hadn't looked at this before now. Um, is this part of the ARPA funds that's paying for this? Do we have? Is it sewer fund, okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two forty, an ordinance authorizing supplemental number one to an agreement tonight, E slash A Incorporated for construction engineering services for the Walnut Street Corridor project from South Grand Avenue to Capitol Avenue, MFT section number seventeen dash zero zero four eight four dash zero zero dash S S P, and authorizing additional expenditures in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and four dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
I see we have some discussion, Alderwoman Conley.
Nope, I just didn't get taken off.
Make sure I slowed down this time.
Thank you for looking, I appreciate that.
Thank you, we have a motion for a consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two forty-one, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Green Demolition Contractors Incorporated for a change order, request number one to contract number PW twenty-two dash eleven dash sixty-eight for demolition and site clearance of three oh two dash three oh six, East Washington Street, concurrent with the demolition of the municipal parking garage located at Fourth and Washington Streets, and authorizing additional expenditures in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you press your button to speak?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Conley.
I did intentionally, it's fine, um, can we get some clarification on what's going on here?
They're almost done, but they're doing a great job.
I see that, but we, we, we put a bid out, a bid notice out before we owned the building?
We, we, we put a bid out and then we originally, it was just to do the demo of the Fourth and Washington ramp, um, and then we were going to have to protect the structure, however, when it was out to bid, we were able to in essence, uh, purchase the property um, and then demo the, demo the property. We compared, um, and then, you know, asked for a change order, um, after, you know, after, after it kind of got underway. Um, we took a look at three hundred East Washington Street, the old Farley's Bar, we demoed back in twenty fourteen and that was sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so we estimated that this would be substantially more, um, but we did get a credit because they didn't have to shore it up and protect the structure. So, um, so that's why we got for seventy-eight thousand dollars, and that, that was also for asbestos abatement.
There's asbestos abatement in the property that we're buying?
We had to abate the property.
Okay.
Before demoing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um, Alderman Redpath.
Nate, I, I don't understand, I didn't quite hear what you said, but did, we changed the bid, I mean, we changed it by adding the seventy-eight thousand dollars, is that, what is that for?
Uh, we actually, so we ended up demolishing the old station house and the buildings next to it, uh, to clear out the box.
That's what the extra seventy-eight's for?
That's correct, as well as the asbestos abatement for that structure.
That's all you.
Thank you, so we have a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to change the motion to consent.
Second.
Thank you, so we got a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two forty-two, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of three million, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents may be used for the MacArthur Boulevard Extension Project, MFT section zero two dash zero zero, three eight two dash zero two dash PV for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion for consent in a second and clerk, I will be present, all those in favor say aye.
A discussion, Madam Chair.
Oh, could you press the button?
Well, it was, we went along too fast, sorry, you want me to push it now?
Yes.
Okay. While you're running a tight ship, okay. You don't do it to everybody, all right, so could you call me about this project tomorrow? I know this is a county-city joint project.
So this is the portion that was constructed, oh, twelve, twelve years ago or so and we're simply just doing some cleanup paperwork. We already expended the money, um, and we utilized motor fuel tax funds for our portion and we just need to notify IDOT that we um, basically utilized MFT funds previously, so it's just some cleanup paperwork, however, the funds were expended years ago.
So this isn't the extension down to Bridge Iron Road and the underpass, overpass, whatever we decide to do with the railroad down there?
Correct, it's the portion from basically Walbash Avenue to Recreation Drive.
Thanks for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Thank you Alderman McMenamin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two forty-three, an ordinance authorizing purchase of two F five fifty XL dump trucks from Feldman Ford LLC for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two forty-four, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars may be used for supplemental number one, construction engineering services for the Walnut Street Corridor Road Diet from South Grand Avenue to Capitol Avenue, MFT section number seventeen dash zero zero four eight four dash zero zero dash S P for the Office of Public Works.
For consent.
Second.
Um, we have a motion in, uh, for a consent in a second, uh, clerk, I'm present, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty-two, two forty-nine, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Hong, Young Restaurants LLC doing business at Empire Korean Steak and Bar located at twenty-one hundred West White Oaks Drive.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for a consent in a second, and we have some discussion, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, um, I, I'm just, um, speaking up, the owner had contacted me, this is a new Korean barbecue going in Ward eight. Um, he just wanted to say he's excited to come to the city, open a new business in a building that has been kind of open and shut for a couple of years now, so I'm looking forward to welcoming him and Mayor, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that liquor license in soon too, so.
Do we know? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty, an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by Home Style Comfort Kitchen LLC doing business as Home Style Comfort Kitchen located at fourteen twenty eighth Cook Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
I do have.
We do have some discussion, Alderman Gregory.
Uh, yes, um, this question would be for Corporation Council, it's just a clarification from my own mind. What is the difference, sir, between a Class E and a Class D liquor license?
I believe it relates to uh, whether or not it's beer and wine or whether or not it also includes spirits.
Okay.
And I, again, I'd be happy to get the uh, detail, meaning the exact definition for both, but that's what it relates to.
Please, sir, thank you.
All those in favor, oh.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty-one, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Blue Source One Incorporated doing business as the Blueprint Bar and Grill located at eight eleven South Eleventh Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
So we have a motion for consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of contract CS seventeen dash zero five dash two eight through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three with Republic Services Incorporated doing business as Republic Services of Sangamon County to provide waste hauling using single streams recycling in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion for a consent in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Budget. for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Budget and Management.
Move the consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing a four-year agreement with Exxon Enterprise Incorporated for purchase of body worn cameras, in-car cameras and software licenses for an amount not to exceed one million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-seven cents for a four-year period for the Springfield Police Department.
For consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we got some discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alderman McMenamin.
As our police chief, are we going back to the original supplier for our body cameras? Or is this a new supplier for the body cameras?
This is still through Exxon Incorporated. That's who we have our initial body cams through. And if I could speak for just a moment, there's supposed to be an amendment as far as the cost on this. I'm sure Corporation Counsel may have that, but it was actually inadvertently put on there. It should only be two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. So we just need to make sure we get that cleaned up. This is just an additional, I'm sorry.
It's the right direction.
So instead of one point eight million, it's?
The one point eight was the original contract and when the ordinance fact sheet was put together, they inadvertently didn't switch that number. So we're just adding twenty additional body cams as well as nine in car cams.
And very quickly, there's there, it's really a type of graphical error because they should have picked up the two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine seventy-five instead of the million eight, which was the original contract. So it's an additional two forty-nine for those additional body cams. And we'll have a correction for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin, are you finished?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Chief, just real quick, this means that all of our officers have body cams?
So as part of the Safety Act, that's something that we're going to be mandated to work towards as far, I believe the deadline is January first of twenty twenty-three that every unit, every officer for the Springfield Police Department will have to wear one, including myself. I know there's some language in the trailer bill that may get that switched, but that's what we're working towards here is increasing our body worn cameras. Currently, everyone that wears a uniform that answers calls for service to include officers, sergeants, excuse me, and lieutenants do have them, yes.
Okay, so so currently though, how many of our, what percentage of our officers?
Well, we have a hundred and sixty-five body cams out of two hundred and twenty-four people. So everyone that answers calls for service, one hundred percent of those officers have body cams.
That's what I want to be sure. And we're, and this, I have the wrong contact lenses, I can't read anything. How about our in-car cameras? How many of our cars have cameras?
I'd have to go back and look. Not not nearly as many as we've had previously. That's correct.
But our new, the new cars that you purchased, will those all have this?
When they get here, yes.
Not here yet, huh?
We budgeted an additional sixty in-car cameras, so that's part of, we're purchasing nine here to go to start that process.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. So we have, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Donalyn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of clarification for Corporation Counsel, would, since this is, the motion was for the consent agenda, should we go ahead and amend it now or do you want to put on debate?
Certainly. In other words, I think that would be fine going ahead and make the technical correction for substituting two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine seventy-five in place of the existing amount.
I would make that motion for the amendment.
And we'll make sure the paperwork reflects that.
Thank you, sir.
So we have a motion for the amendment in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two.
Hold on, we still. Move for the consent agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
So do I have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-two, two fifty-five, a resolution authorizing an advisory question of the public policy for submission on the ballot for the general election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two regarding the dissolving of the portion of all townships located within the city of Springfield.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion for any discussion. Alderman Donalyn.
That was from last ordinance.
Oh, okay. I'm slowing down. All those in favor?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman.
Jumped on you.
Alderman Handout, Hanhour.
Could you explain what 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 townships, what are we, what are we looking at doing here?
I think the mayor, I need to call on the mayor, but he didn't push his button and it's okay.
Yeah, I'll give my legal opinion, then Corporation Counsel can give his, but essentially what it is is, as the city's grown, it used to be co-terminals with Capitol Township, but we've annexed in all the lake properties, properties on the west side, different areas. And there's a loophole in state statute where they could do a referendum to retain them in that township. So instead of getting a tax relief, what they've seen is no change or maybe their taxes actually went up through that annexation. So that's a driving point. What this does, it's an advisory recommend, referendum. It's, you know, to get public feedback on the initiative. And what we would do, once it passes, is take it to state legislature and ask them to change or close the loophole where we would be able to consolidate those parcels just within the city of Springfield boundaries to the city of Springfield. So what that means is the, could mean is the property taxes that would go to the townships no longer would do that and we'd rebate what we could. And then any services, you know, if we so deem it, we would continue those services. But right now, the ones that, you know, around the lake, you know, or around the west side, some pay a road tax, we do the roads. We do police, we do fire, we do all of that services. So that's the driving factor for this particular question that would go on the November ballot.
I pushed my button, so I didn't get yelled at.
Alderman Hanhour?
I'm just following up. So so like current one, for example, that there's there's multiple parts of it that that have been annexed into the city. All we're gonna do is we're, they'll be part of Capitol or what, how how's? How will that work? And and then like all the wood sides out at the lake and I think, I mean, there's some ball, I think, some somewhere, you know.
Actually, those would be dissolved. They wouldn't go to township. That's, you know, the assessment's done right now. Corporation Counsel couldn't chime in, but it'd be handled through the county and that's the area that we would have to take a look at. What's that process look like? I don't think it changes. They do the assessment right now for the townships, my understanding. So that wouldn't change. Do we have to pay for that service or is that something we do? That's something that would have to be worked out. But really, that's how we view it is it'd be a dissolution of the township tax on those parcels.
Are you good, Alderman Hanhour? Alderman McMenamin?
Madam Chair, I have an obligation to get to, so that's why I'm leaving the meeting. I have an obligation.
Thank you for letting me know.
Good luck.
So we have our motion for debate in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Present.
Oh, I'm sorry, present, Alderman Donalyn.
Noted.
Okay, we have made it through on my first day of cheerwoman. Next is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the committee? Great. Is there any new business to come before the committee? I beat you, Sean.
Yeah, until we're all done.
So tomorrow, it, no, not tomorrow, Thursday is Music on the Y Block and I invite all of my colleagues to come out and guess what? It's the kickoff to Juneteenth. And I'm so happy to sponsor that night, so I need everybody to come out and support. And then following the Music on the Y Block, we have a after celebration at Truth Lounge and I encourage everyone to come and see what's going on there too, to continue kicking off Juneteenth. And I will turn it over to Alderman Gregory.
I just want to make a quick announcement. We are, we will continue our pursuit of getting our cannabis business grants. In fact, tomorrow at nine AM, seven hundred South Livingston, anyone who wants to go over and work on business plans or anything like that, feel free to go there. That does again, start at nine PM. And I would just like to say, if I don't see everybody before Monday, happy Juneteenth.
Sean, you're not gonna tell them what's all going on?
Oh, you want me to go through the list?
Yeah, just tell them.
So Thursday, we got Levitt, Levitt Amp. Friday, I encourage everyone to come out to the New York exhibit at the Illinois State Museum. It's really nice. It'll have paintings from artists, you know, all over the Midwest. Saturday, excuse me, yeah, that's Friday, there will be a block party following that the afternoon. I believe it starts at four o'clock. Saturday, ten AM, the parade starts with multiple activities in the park. You know, I spoke to the director recently and she was excited and, you know, she's she's still getting things set day by day. Her phone's not, stopped ringing. I talked to her earlier. And Sunday, we'll have some good old church and we'll have fitness in the park and some good activities. And, you know, we encourage you to come out. They'll have the Dexter and the Funk Yard Band, I believe that is their name. They were there last year and they really did a good job, so they invited them back down. So invite you all out. I'll see you out. And again, happy Juneteenth.
Thank you. And also too, one more item that the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity is having their first gala at the Wyndham Hotel at six PM on Sunday to end Juneteenth and happy Juneteenth. And Aaron, I hope you join me. I'm bringing my double dutch rope for the block party.
I used to get out.
I used to be really good at that. I was much younger.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. I have a very small event going on Saturday, so after the parade, Ward Eight has a private park actually that's been that's been maintained by the Cookie Mill Church. This is a Lewis Park Parks and Trails. We're having a fundraiser out there. It's a bags tournament. So if, there are cash prizes for the four top winners in this tournament. So if anyone's got a good throwing arm, you can register for that through four o'clock Saturday. There're gonna be mini pony, mini horses for the kids, food truck. Not quite as extravagant as you've got, Alderman Gregory, but we'll have some live music and, you know, just another fun thing to do for one day this week that's not gonna be outrageously hot.
I know. Tell me about it.
Friday's Friday's gonna be fine too.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And Sunday.
Fun times, fun times.
We'll let the heat come back on Monday. But yeah, so invite everyone into Ward Eight this weekend.
Thank you.
After the parade.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley and Mayor Langfelder. Are you gonna speak about the cooling centers?
No, you can't.
No, you can't.
No, actually, I was gonna mention the police application process is now open, I think through July twenty-fifth, is that correct? You wanna come up and talk about it? And then while he comes up, tonight, the Honor Flight comes back. It's their first trip post pandemic. They're returning from Washington DC around nine thirty at the airport, so all invited to go out to the airport and welcome the veterans back.
I'd love to talk on the upcoming Springfield Police Testing. We're excited to offer another round of testing. There are actual three testing opportunities. It's July twenty-third, twenty-ninth and August first. You can choose any one of those and be an opportunity to do a physical and a written on the same day. Hoping to bolster our numbers this year. So if anyone knows of a candidate who would fit the bill to be a great police officer, then we'd love to have them. So Alderman Redpath, I think your time is coming on unfortunately, according to the.
I could still pass that physical.
We are looking for some qualified men and women and I know all of us knows that person that would fit the bill. So please help us in the recruiting process. So thank you.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you, Chief Scarlett. Now it is time for the citizen request to address the committee. Do we have any citizens signed up to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, Curtis Yokum.
Mr. Yokum, if you could state your address and please try to stick within your five minutes so I don't have to use my gavel on you. And please do address your comments to me.
I'm in Ward Two. I didn't give you my address.
Facts.
You know, what do you need my address for?
That's our rule.
Too much information.
You're just giving me a hard time.
You can find that out. That's public information if you want. My name is Curtis Yokum. I was here, well, I don't know, two or three months ago talking about minority hiring and operators within Public Works. And Mayor, hopefully still can get something done. But that's not the reason why I'm here, but I just wanted to get that out there. I want to talk about the Juneteenth federal holiday, which I can only imagine back in eighteen hundreds what my ancestors and a lot of other people would, how they would feel when they knew that they found out that they was free. And to this day, the significance of it, it still resonates with me. But my issue is with this city council to only observe Juneteenth, Monday through Friday. It's totally, in my opinion, disrespectful. It's shameful. And it's it's not about a day off. The optics of this for the city council is bad, very bad. This is the capital city of the state of Illinois, Abe Lincoln's hometown, Emancipation Proclamation. And we finally get a Juneteenth and you can't get it right. You can't get it right. And it's shameful. Let's do July fourth that way. How about that? We'll see what we get, kind of feedback we get on that one. Let's do another holiday the same way. Why would you shortchange Juneteenth? And you talk about integrity, this council, you do the best job you can up here. This wasn't done with any kind of integrity, none whatsoever, none. It's shameful. It's shameful. I mean, I don't even know who would even suggest to to even do that. Oh, let's just recognize it Monday through Friday. It's a federal holiday. Not keeping it the same as all the other holidays. Whoever suggested it and people that voted for it and passed it, to me, they don't even deserve to sit around this horseshoe. That's the way I feel about it. Slavery was the worst sin in the United States and still is, it's still, it was and still to this day, the worst sin in this United States. And we cannot get Juneteenth right? That's all I got. I won't take too much of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yokum. Alderman Gregory, Chuck?
I defer to my my elder to speak first.
I was just gonna ask, Mr. Yokum, is is, how do they do it in the other ones? Is the county and the state and the federal, they observe it on the weekends also?
What's that got to do with the state?
I'm asking because I'm.
What's got, look, either lead file or get out the way.
Well, listen.
Let's, let's, just get out.
Forget, forget, I'm trying to ask a question.
You know, you you find out. I don't know. You find out.
All right.
I mean.
Mr. Yokum, Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Chairman Purchase. I definitely hear you and I, you know, me and the mayor and some of Alderwoman Turner, we we first talked about this and, you know, in the pandemic. So we drew it up. In fact, a whole year earlier than everyone else found that it was significant to do it. And we was in some financial times and and this is what came to, this is what we could get past at that point in time. So I'm I'm open. I think our council is open to really making this the same as every other holiday, I believe, when when we passed it. You know, I quoted that. I went back and looked at the papers and stuff and, you know, that was, that was the thing. We wanted this to be just like any other holiday. I know we talked about taking, exchanging it for Columbus Days and things of that nature. And, you know, so we'll take a look at it and, you know, I'm all for the change and 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 getting it done, you know, for the citizens.
That's pretty bad, pretty bad when you cut it, when you cut it short like that. That's, it's embarrassment. This city council should be embarrassed to even suggest it and vote on it.
You know what, we voted on what was presented. We was voted for what was presented to us.
Chuck.
You should say something.
Hello, 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 hello.
You shouldn't say something.
We're not waiting for, waiting for order or you will not be able to continue talking. Oh, I understand that, but you still gotta listen to me, Mr. Curtis. Alderman Redpath, do you wanna go? Cause you do have.
I'm just trying to explain to Curtis, and he and I have been friends for fifty years. I'm just saying that we voted on what was presented to us. I don't have a problem observing it on the weekends or the weekdays. I don't think anybody does. Do you guys?
Nope.
All right, so.
And Mr. Yokum, what I was saying.
I wasn't trying to be argumentative with you. I was trying to.
But if nobody had a problem with it, then how they get voted on it?
We voted on what was presented to us as the ordinance, what was drafted. That's, that's, that's.
Then somebody screwed up then. You should have told whoever drafted, they screwed up. I'll put it that way.
If it comes, if it comes back to us, Curtis, if it comes back to us, I'll vote for it.
Yes, and I would like to just say to you, Mr. Curtis, that some of us is new up here and you're talking to us like we've been here. So if you have some ideals that you wanna see done, could you please bring it forward? Because it's two of us that just got up here and you're not giving us the opportunity when you're talking and addressing us.
I didn't say nothing that you did.
You didn't say, you just said the whole council. So I'm just saying, if you wanna work with us, just let us know.
If you didn't vote on that, then you ain't got nothing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
And one last. And one last point is, how that was done, I'm not so sure that the contract, our contract was violated, but I'll let the union handle that.
Thank you for coming. Is there any other citizens to speak?
None have signed up, Madam Chair.
Do we have anybody in the audience that want to address the city council? Perfect. Seeing that there's nothing else to come before the committee, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Ooh, y'all made me use the gavel today. Aaron.